Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Schwartz.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schwartz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge.
Thank you. If you could all please stand for the pledge in a moment after. The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could all please remain sitting for just one moment. Today's unpredictable weather gave us a nice reminder of what happened not too long ago for the Memorial Day tornadoes and just to see how quickly our emergency responders, our officers, our law enforcement, our firefighters, our school districts, everybody kind of sprang into action to make sure our residents, our children, and everybody in the workforce was safe. So if we could just give a quick thank you and remembrance and prayer for everyone who worked effectively today and also those from the May tornado who are still recovering in some areas of the city. Thank you very much.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Any changes?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes, we'll start with February 13th work session minutes. Anything? Motion?
Move to approve the work session minutes of February 13th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the February 13th work session as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, aye. Next are the minutes of February 13th for the regular session meeting. Any changes?
Move to approve the minutes from February 13th regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on February 13th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, aye. Next on the schedule is pre-scheduled speaker, and it is our own, Mr. Pete Landrum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Tonight, we have some changes that are coming. Updated staffing management plan for 2023. I believe we would have titled this 2024 prior, but with some recent changes, we are now accelerating the plan. With change, you know, change is inevitable, growth is optional, and old ways won't open new doors. So we're trying some new ways. Some ways look familiar, as in the past, but with some changes to it. So I look forward to some changes. Change is good. So some of this is the resignations and retirements that we have recently had. We just had, you know, we've been working, I worked with City Council this past summer on some succession planning, which was, like I said, already in progress. And we were looking towards 2024 with some retirements that we know were ready to happen. But unexpectedly, some other changes have necessitated they need to implement a plan sooner. I do want to state that this plan does not change the services or functions offered or performed. Again, the plan does not change the services or functions offered or performed. With an additional, once additional staff member of an associate engineer, it'll help improve services, I strongly believe, but it's not changing the mechanics of what services are being offered. So now, our Public Administrative Services Director, Mr. Mike Thonero, started today, was his first day as Washington Township Administrator. So congratulate him. I hope he does very well, and he'll represent Washington Township very well. So with that, his last day was Friday. Our Human Resource Manager is, I think, next Monday is officially, but I think Wednesday is her actual last day here. And then we have some 2024 known retirements that were going to happen, that we already knew about, and that, those were the ones that we were going to make a plan. But the two that are now, we weren't expecting necessarily. So really, we're having four significant changes that were happening when we only thought two were. This was, you know, this is hard to see at home, I know that. You have this before you, but under the Mike Thonero, who just left, the Public Administrative Services Director, this was the table of organization. Of course, as he had engineering, public service, golf, and parks all reporting to him, and everything that's underneath of those is extensive. Except for the police department, he had the largest single department. And very tough to keep up with all of that, thus the change, especially as we've grown. So the first thing this plan is going to do to update is the engineering division's going to add an Associate City Engineer. And with the continued growth of managing all the city projects, grants just awarded through MVRPC, $8.4 million. We applied for seven grants, we got all seven grants. Be careful what you ask for. We got them all. That's great. But with our staffing, our city engineer, which I'll tell you a little bit more about, that's stepping up to be our, right now, interim director. The ARPA funds, well, and our, we only have another assistant then at that point in time. So other things besides the grants, ARPA funding, two major stormwater projects we've got going on, 675 Grange Hall, that study going on, so much continues to go on, our resurfacing annual program, and plainly, the succession planning of engineering for the division of the engineering in the future, retirements that may be coming up there in the near future. So this is how the engineering division, really the only change is to add an Associate City Engineer. Was initially, again, part of 2024 to implement. So before any of the succession planning or the other changes, this I had in mind to bring just because of the sheer volume of grants and projects that we are depending upon millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars on two engineers to manage it, and it's just, it's not sustainable. Speaking of the grants, this is our engineering, as you can see, the total amount of grants, grant funding of $117 million since 1997 in grant writing that they've done on our road improvements. And this does include the stormwater that we just received from ARPA as well. But talk about value for your money. It's astounding what they have accomplished, and we thank them. So we want to make sure we support them so we can continue to get this funding. So the biggest change here is a split with the Public Administrative Services Division responsibilities. Again, with the responsibilities under division, which that included, which I already stated, but engineering, golf, parks, and public service. So we're splitting where public service, basically, it will rename it Public Services Department instead of PASD, and they will supervise the Public Service Division and Engineering Division as direct reports only. Again, with public service, with the addition of our Dude Solutions, with engineering and public service, our Work Order System, you guys had a sneak preview of the, what they've been doing with the GIS and all the assets and resources that we've been pouring into that system that, you know, used to, used to, out of sight, out of mind. Well, that doesn't work really well. I mean, it may do you for a period of time, but we want to identify all the, all the assets that we're responsible for, and that actually has, have done quite nicely in doing so. But with that creates just even more responsibility. The success of the levies, which I admitted. And then, of course, when you're not only public service, but the Parks Department, a whole new parks, 148-acre park that's coming our way, which we're going to hopefully name tonight. So all those additional responsibilities, it's just hard to put under one department director. So Public Services Director, City Engineer, will have two divisions, engineering and public services. The third change was to add an Assistant City Manager. This would be, would help in, under the growth that has happened to, to the PASD position of being spread too thin. So the HR, which I'll talk about HR in a moment, but the HR Director will report to the Assistant City Manager, as well as the Parks and Golf, and as well as special projects and duties assigned by the City Manager. So he's going to have, she, he, she's going to have plenty of work for, to do with this, plus potential growth. So here's how the table of organization would look for the Assistant City Manager position. Now, moving on to the HR, since I mentioned that, this was part of the 2024 changes that are coming up with, with the Financial Administrative Services Director. Hey, if anything at all, I'm just changing to get away with these big, huge titles. The FASDA, as we call it, Financial Administrative Services Director, will become just the Finance Director. With this upgrade to the HR Director, with the retirement, those duties that the current Director takes on for HR will now go to the HR Director. Okay? So it's an upgrade from a HR Manager to an HR Director. Right now, our finance guy, Mr. Casera, does a lot of HR work, from dealing with the health insurance, workers' comp, dealing with the union and negotiations and grievances and all kinds of things, dealing with that collective bargaining issues, risk management and others. So now, the HR Director will also take on that bigger role of taking those on, which I believe is in the right spot, in my opinion. So the HR Services, Resources Director will have a Support Clerk/Receptionist downstairs that's already there, and a part-time HR Assistant, which we are hiring for. This was part of the 2024 budget. We already knew that, help is needed. So we're in the process of hiring that position right now. And other changes, again, I mentioned the Finance Director. These are 2024 changes, and the Executive Assistant to City Manager as well in 2024 plan to retire. And those are some other changes that will be made to their, you know, if anything, our Communications Department has exploded, and I think you guys have seen good bang for the buck out of the Communications and how much we've been doing with that with Katie. And I do want to make some of the responsibilities in the Executive Assistant to help with Communications and Writing, and I need some assistance with things, but I'm very computer-lit, so, you know, it's not the old day of kind of assistance that did every single email for you. You know, it just doesn't work that way now. So we're kind of modernized the actual, what do we actually need in the City Manager's office? And one of those areas is in Communications. So the pay grade will be adjusted appropriately. All right, so the Finance Director, since I touched that, really, this is what it looks like. And that is really just the same thing, except HR is no longer there. So that Finance Director will still manage the IT contract, still have an Account Clerk, and still have the payroll person and the Assistant Finance Director. So the summary here is basically the Public Administrative Services Director will become the Public Services Director slash Engineer, while the Finance Administrative Services Director will become just the Finance Director in 2024. And again, that will remove HR and all related duties from HR will be transferred to HR. City Engineer, basically, where I said, City Engineer, by heaven, if you don't get the hint by that, which I'll mention here in a minute, will become the Public Services Director slash City Engineer. Mr. Mormon is acting interim right now, Director. But this shows the Associate City Engineer position being added. This is the really true additional position that we're adding that there is a cost to, and I'll get to that here in a moment. The HR Manager, as I stated, will become the HR Director and take on those additional responsibilities. The Executive Assistant, as we mentioned, there'll be some changes there in 2024 as well. And the vacant unfilled Assistant City Manager, it's been vacant, I believe, since about 2008, 2009 was the last significant change where they created the FASDA and FASDA and did some combinations. That will be hired as an Assistant City Manager, and the vacant position will be filled and, again, supervise Parks, Golf, Human Resources, and all those things that are underneath that. It's easy to say Parks, but Parks includes cemeteries, Parks includes the Senior Center, the Senior Center Transportation, you know, there's things underneath of each one of those. So by the end of 2024, by the end of 2024, assuming the hiring of additional costs for the Associate City Engineer, all the other changes that we're talking about are estimated to be cost negligible overall, citywide. Let me explain this. You're looking at total salary costs of, in excess of $600,000. I'm not saying it's neutral. It may be neutral, because my estimates on what I'm going to be able to hire these positions at will depend upon, you know, the candidates that I get, the pools, the experience, and so forth. But right now, I have it about even with my estimates. If by chance, it takes me $5,000, $10,000, or something like that, more to get the candidates I want, you know, in the scope of $600,000 in salaries, $5,000 additional, $10,000 additional, is negligible. Okay? So that's how I'm defining that. I'm going to try to be my best to be in budget, so I could say that it was cost-neutral. But you just don't know until you get the pool and the experience and so forth. So I can't make any promises with that, but it, it will be small. If there is an increase, it'll be very small. So what's next? Just so those that didn't know, we had a work session on this, where I presented this already. I've spoken to each and every individual Councilmember, so this has been discussed, questions asked. I just didn't want, didn't want the public to think we're up here, and this is the first time anybody has heard this. It was discussed at the last work session, and is also, again, I individually discuss and receive feedback from each individual Councilmember. The next council steps is Ordinance Chapter 30, which is simple, one page. It's a governmental organization, it just lists at a high level the organization. I'm asking to present that on March 13th, public hearing. It's already been advertised, approval as an emergency, so that we can make these much-needed changes. As you said, as you already know, Mr. Thonero is gone. By the time 13th is here, we're without Human Resources, even Manager at that point in time. So we do need to expedite these significant openings that we have. The next step, if that's approved on the 13th, then the approval of City Manager's appointment of Public Services Director on the 13th as well. I can request Council's approval for the City Manager's appointment of Jeff Mormon as Public Services Director, City Engineer. And Assistant City Manager position, that would be to, to be determined. We haven't even began to advertise for that position. And that is where we are. Open to take any questions? I thank you for your time.
Pete, if you could repeat one more time.
Mike.
If you could repeat one more time, the estimated cost-neutral, with the one exception. Is that correct?
With the one exception, a City Engineer, and those are the ones, remember, $117 million in grant funding, that they, they're the ones that write those grants. A new City Engineer to manage all that's going to be, with Mr. Mormon and myself, an Associate City Engineer should be in the $75,000 to $80,000 range in salary. That really, all the other changes are pretty close to, I keep hating to say, cost-neutral, but it's going to be very close. So that is an additional cost, no doubt, but that is what's driving the additional costs, is the additional City Engineer, which, again, is very much needed to. I mean, we've got additional levy funding, which is great, in that we pour most of that into projects. Our ARPA funds, the $5 million, 92% of every dime of it is going into capital and infrastructure. So we are being very, and the rest of it was other types of things, like the video equipment here. So everything we've been responsible for, but there comes to a point where you, you have to have management of the tools of the infrastructure. You have to have additional staff, not actually performing, like filling potholes, although we're doing that in public services, hiring the five additional per the levy that passed. But in this essence, we keep having all these projects in the levy pass. You know, they wanted more resurfacing, they wanted more road and street projects, and we're doing that. But in order to keep up with effectively managing those, having an additional City Engineer is very much needed.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the public realize that there is, you know, the engineer. And of course, the engineer is one, the engineering department has extra work right now with all the grants that have been approved for the future.
Seven out of seven isn't bad, is it? That's pretty good odds.
Oh, it's not. Thank you very much. Anybody else have a point, comment, or question? Thanks, Pete.
All right, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is Ordinance 23-6.
Ordinance 23-6, to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. And to amend Ordinance 22-32.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is, that's Debbie Redd, supplemental appropriations and certifying additional revenue. You have the detail in front of you, but I'll just recap those really quickly. We had budgeted $500,000 for the Grange Hall interchange study, and we already had $400,000 coming in from the ODOT as a grant. And we actually applied for a community development grant through Green County Department of Development, $400,000, and we received that money. And so what we'd like to do is certify that additional revenue. But we realized too early in the process that that amount might not make it for the study itself. So we want to appropriate that funds too, just so that we have the $600,000 in the event that there's an overrun during the study process. So that's the first item. The opioid settlement fund, when we were doing the budget, we weren't sure exactly what we were going to get for that. We actually got more than we had previously in the previous year, but I didn't put that in the budget, so we need to certify that revenue, the $16,314. And the police would like to have that appropriated, because they're going to use that for DARE funding, which is allowed under that particular settlement. The golf course, they actually, if you recall, they had a lease for their new carts. They also got a beverage cart, and I think it was five utility carts. And we decided to trade in the golf carts on that lease, but held back on the utility vehicles, because we knew they were coming later and thought we would just sell those by ourselves. And what we had originally budgeted was $8,000, but the market turned really good for those utility vehicles, and we actually got $19,800 selling it through our GOV deals process. So with that in mind, the carts that we received didn't have windshields and covers, and we thought it might be a good idea to incorporate those accessories into those utility carts for our workers, for their safety and protection from the sun. And so with that additional 11,800 coming in, the golf course wanted to spend $5,200 to get the add-on roofs and shields, front shields for those vehicles. So again, what we'd like to do is certify that additional revenue and then use that and appropriate that for that additional safety item for our maintenance workers. Then our miscellaneous trust fund, that's our catch-all fund, that we have a lot of different fundings in there. It's not usually a significant amount, but we received money from Anthem a couple of years ago for our wellness program. We do have a wellness program through Anthem, through the OBC that we use, but we had this money sitting there, and we decided to provide an incentive for folks that joined the wellness program. And at the holiday luncheon, we actually gave out incentive awards for those that were participating in the wellness, again, trying to make it an incentive-induced to get more people participating. Our participation level's about 50%, and we wanted to get that up a little bit. So we utilized that money. Again, I didn't have that budgeted, so what we'd like to do is appropriate $16,800 out of that fund that we had established, that had about $4,000 in it for use for, directly for the wellness program, and appropriate that for this new internal incentive program that we have set up to give out some incentives at the end of each year, so. And then the last item is the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. We're updating their bicycle maps, and we're looking for sponsors to lower the cost associated with that. Again, our BikeWay and Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee, BANTAC, had some money sitting in the 750 account that they accumulated from programs that they put in for maintaining bicycles and things like that. And they wanted to contribute funds to the update of those bicycle, regional bicycle maps. So they requested that if we could contribute $750 out of that fund that they raised to contribute to updating those pamphlets. And again, that wasn't in the original budget, so we need to appropriate the funds for that, that project. And again, I believe they have like $2,000 in there, so we had plenty of money to cover that out of this fund. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. This is an ordinance, though. We'll just second, this is an ordinance. Someone asked if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this ordinance. Seeing none, we will close the public input and ask council if there's any comments the council would like to make. Very good. You run a tight ship, sir.
Exactly.
Really nice to get that extra money for the golf course.
Yep. All right. So without further ado, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Ordinance 23-6.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 23-6. May we have a roll call, please? This is a single reading ordinance.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Next on the agenda is Resolution 23-9.
Resolution 23-9, to authorize the application for the Ohio BWC Safety Intervention Grant Program on behalf of the Beaver Creek Public Service Division.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Staff recently became aware of a grant program through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation, where they pay up to 75% of the cost of the purchase of equipment that will, will help prevent injuries and such at the Public Service Department. We're proposing the purchase of two pieces of equipment through this grant program, or rather, applying for the purchase. One would be a hydraulic jackhammer attachment to a TracO, and the other is a lift, and both of those, we think, would help prevent injuries. The total cost of the, of the purchase would be $14,000, and again, the grant, if successful, would pay for 75% of that cost. Just one last thing to add, the money is already included in this year's budget, so if we are successful, it wouldn't be any additional funds to the city. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions? Anyone?
Do you know the timeframe of the grant, or when they're going to award that, or when you might find out?
Yeah, I think this summer, and once we, we do get the grant, we have three months, I believe, to get the equipment purchased after we get the grant.
Excellent.
And just for the public at home, 25% matching grant is, is how it works.
It is, yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, how about a motion?
Motion to approve, Your Honor, Resolution 23-9.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-9. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is Resolution 23-10.
Resolution 23-10, a resolution naming the new 148 acres of parkland along Grange Hall Road in between Shakertown Road and East Patterson Road.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell.
Good evening. All right, so, sorry. So I just want to give a little background before we get to the excitement of naming- So I just want to give a little background before we get to the excitement of naming our new park. Just to have like a little background, it seems like this has been going on since last fall. Actually, last January, a whole lot of stuff in between. So again, this was land that was purchased in 2022. There's two different sections. We bought it in kind of two different increments, 100 acres and then 48 acres, all purchased through grant funding through the Ohio Division of Natural Resources and our 712 funds, which is fees in lieu of land. As Debbie mentioned, it is 148 acres along Grange Hall Road between Patterson and Shakertown. And then again, back in January of '22 is when we reviewed the park naming policy. Under that policy, we have three different methodologies to name a park. One is after a subdivision, so when a new subdivision comes in, we accept that parkland will name the park after that subdivision. The other is acquisition through a donation. So again, if somebody was kind enough to give us the land, or at least 51% more of either funds or land, we allow them to name the park. And the last one is acquisition through a grant or purchased, and then we get community input. So again, we purchased this land through a grant, so we asked for community input. As we put it out there, we just said, hey, here's some different ways that you can come up with a name. Is a geographic location of the facility, unique natural or geographic feature, adjoining subdivision, street or natural feature, or any other name befitting the parcel. We ask that the name does not undermine our public confidence in the city's impartiality. A park cannot be named after a person or organization. I mean, it can't be given a name as an existing school site or a public facility. So back in the fall, we put information out in the Dayton Daily News on social media and city website, asking, here's our park naming policy, and we would love to get some names. Little did we know, we would receive 243 submissions. Fantastic. Great problem or challenge to have. So after going through all of those submissions, combining all the duplicates and removing nominations that did not fit our criteria, 143 different names were sent to Park Board. Our Park Board members sent in their top 10 names for compilation. So prior to their meeting, I sent them all 143 names along with the description. Some people wrote in, it's like, hey, I like this name, and here's why. So they had a little background. And then just to kind of speed along, Park Board said, hey, listen, here's 143 names that's out there. If you would, each Park Board member sent me 10 names back. So I compiled that list down to 35. So during their Park Board meeting in December, they took those 35 names, nominated seven to vote on that evening, and we said that we were going to bring no more than four to City Council. So in January of this year, four names were recommended to City Council. We had Deerfield Park, Hopewell Park, Shakertown Park, Spring House Park. This was brought forth in a work session. We had some great discussions of that, but the question was asked, hey, what were those other three names that Park Board put out there? So just last week, presented, the other three names was Apple Valley Park, Rolling Hills Park, and The Groves. So after that discussion, we decided, I'm sorry, you decided actually, that you would vote on three different names, Deerfield Park, Spring House, or Shakertown. Very good. So after all that, you have three names. Certainly, more than welcome if you want, if there's any other discussion, but Mr. Landrum has a nice little voting or decision sheet up on the board. If there's no discussion, what I think, the easiest thing to do, we'll just read the park name. If you're interested, raise your hand. Mr. Landrum will tally up the votes, and we'll go through each park. If we have a clear-cut winner, you can do your thing. We'll go through the resolution. If we don't, we can go to round two, take the next top two names. Again, you only get one vote, only one. So and Mr. Landrum will be watching you, so don't try to vote twice. Any discussion? You ready to go?
When you're ready, we're ready.
A major thank you to the Park Board and to all the residents, 243, that presented nominations. It's really wonderful.
It was fantastic.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Very good.
All right. So if anybody is interested in Deerfield Park, would you please raise your hands? All right, we have Shakertown Park. And we have Spring House Park.
I think the hands have it.
I think so. Yeah, luckily, we only have to count to four. So it's like Spring House, and then I believe you need to do your motions and resolutions, so we can fill in the blanks.
Sounds good. All right, do I have a motion to officially name our newest and largest park?
So I move, I move to amend Resolution 23-10 by inserting Spring House Park.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend Resolution 23-10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now can we have a motion to officially name our brand-new park?
Move to approve Resolution 23-10 as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-10, naming our new park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Decision items. You thought that was tough. Now wait till we get to this part. That's right. Yep. And you can let us know when you're ready, please. But anyway, for the public's purpose, this is, this next section is where we appoint our members to our boards and commissions for generally three-years terms. Some of them are unexpired shorter terms, but this is something we address every year in February, and so we're going to do it again this year. Are you ready? Okay. All right, so boards and commission appointments. So first, I will ask to, for a motion to open nominations for the planning commission.
I moved open nominations for the planning commission board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now may I have nominations, please? Present your nominations.
Your Honor, I'd move Nicholas Loftus and Jonathan Meyer. Or do we, or do they have to be taken separately? Can you have both?
Yeah, I don't know why you can't, but that's.
Second.
All right. Any further nominations?
Second nomination.
Now, we don't actually need a second on the nomination.
No.
All right, so any further nominations?
Move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Because there are two seats and two nominations, do I have a motion to appoint?
Move to appoint Nicholas Loftus and Jonathan Meyer.
Second.
For the full term, for the full three-year term.
For the full term.
Full term.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Loftus and Mr. Meyer to the planning commission for a three-year term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I'll ask for a motion to open nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Move to open nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for BZA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations, please.
I nominate Colin Rust.
I nominate Alexander Clunin.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Hudnall.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. Mr. Dur, you nominated Mr. Clunin?
Yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor didn't.
I nominated Colin Rust.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further nominations?
And then Michelle Hudnall was Councilmember.
Any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion is second to close nominations for the BZA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have three individuals nominated. We have two seats available. So we are going to do what we, the fun part. So we're going to, everybody gets two votes. We're going to go through, and I'll call the name off, and you'll get two of the three you can, you can vote on. So first up with nomination was Debbie, who was nominated first?
Colin Rust.
Rust.
Colin Rust.
All right. All in favor of appointing Colin Rust, please raise your hand. Got one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, six. Okay. All in favor of nominating Alexander Clunin?
I am. Or I'm sure trying. There we go.
All in favor, all in favor of nominating Alexander, or appointing Alexander Clunin, please raise your hand. And all in favor of appointing Michelle Hudnall?
Hudnall.
Please raise your hand. One, two. Did somebody not vote?
Three, three.
There's only six.
Yeah, we got three.
Oh, I didn't see, I didn't count three that time. I'm sorry, I just missed it. All right, so three. All right, so we're going to take a second round. Colin Rust will not be in the ballot this time. We have two individuals to vote on, and we will go in the same order. All in favor of appointing Alexander Clunin, please raise your hand. Three.
Is there any discussion involved?
We can, we can.
Three and three, I feel like we're just going to keep going around and around.
I think you could be right.
I mean, we can take the second vote, just because we're already in the middle of the second vote, but I think maybe discussion before the third vote.
Yeah, let's officially get to, so. Anyway, all in favor of appointing Michelle Hudnall? Three. All right. So now, discussion. Who, who wants to?
I can tell you why I nominated Michelle Hudnall. She is serving as a zoning administrator in a local township, and she serves very closely with the Board of Zoning Appeals in that township. She's a resident of Beaver Creek. She's a former police officer, and she's very organized and competent, and not to take anything away from our incumbent. I think that he's doing a fantastic job as well. But after reading all of the opportunities for people on inclusion on the zoning appeals board, I thought that I would nominate her.
Okay? And I'll comment on the other side, and that's simply that we, historically, we typically ask our staff how their boards are doing and how they're working well with each other. And, and while I do know that there, you know, there are sometimes conflicts with staff and a board member of any board, that in this particular case, these two gentlemen, there was none that I'm aware of. And so I, my vote for Alexander is simply on the, my position that I think staff is the one that has to work with him, and that staff has, had the opportunity to work with this gentleman. And so I'm giving him an opportunity to stay.
If I just may, Randy's not here to ask, sorry, he's on lovely vacation, so. The, I double-checked with Randy, he had reviewed all the applicants. And as Mayor Stone said, there was no issues with this. This person, Mr. Clunin, is new to the Board of Appeals since September 2022. They've had several cases, and he's performed well. He is an attorney by trade, again, from Beaver Creek and so forth. So that's kind of, you've had the application on him, but there's not been any issues with him since he has served.
That was the other point on mine that I forgot to make, and that is simply that he was, he's only, he's a short timer. He's really not had a great length of time to prove himself, but staff seems to think that he's, he's a good person for the seat. So with that, any further comments?
I will say, I don't think it's always a bad thing to get fresh perspectives. I understand, and I think Colin Rust is very relatively new as well. Yeah, so I think that's, yeah, I do appreciate when we have people who want to come back, because there are often times we sit up here, and we don't have enough people to fill these seats, and we're grasping at straws, hoping someone who picked it last on their list is still willing to serve. But I do appreciate Ms. Hudnall's resume and the different perspectives she could bring to the board as well.
Okay. So we ready for the next vote? All right. All in favor of appointing Alexander Clunin? Raise your hand. Okay. All in favor of Michelle Hudnall? One, two, three. All right, so with it, we are, without our seventh member, we are not going to make an appointment, that appointment tonight. And so I will ask for a motion to appoint Colin Rust.
Move to appoint Colin Rust, Your Honor, to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Colin Rust to the board, to a full term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I do want to thank the applicants for the interest, and, and I do know that we do this every year. In some years, it's, there are a lot of incumbents that we feel need to stay, and other years where we would like to make some changes. So I hope you will continue to be, one way or the other, to be involved. Next, so open nominee, I need a motion to open nominations for the.
Need to close? Oh, not for that.
Make the appointment. Open nominations for the CRA Housing Council.
Move to open nominations for the CRA Housing Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open for nominations, please.
Nominate Zach Upton.
I'll nominate Keith Ayers.
Any further nominations?
Move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor?
Excuse me, who, I'm sorry, who made the motion to close?
I did.
Vice Mayor.
The motion and a second to close nominations for the CRA Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two nominees, we have two seats open. Who wants to make a motion to appoint?
I'm sorry, excuse me. I missed the nominee. I got Councilmember Bales, but I did not get another.
Councilmember Adams.
I'm sorry.
I did, Zach Upton.
Yeah, that was the first one.
It takes a minute to click. If you guys can kind of watch, you can tell where she's at.
Oh, we've got to look up there, I'm sorry.
She has to click every one, so if you see her off or.
All right. Well, just slow us down whenever we get too rowdy.
Councilmember Adams just talked so soft.
I know.
Well, over here, it sounds really loud.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Did we make that motion and approve it?
We moved to close. And since there's only.
Haven't appointed.
That's what I'm at, was that, that's what I was asking for, was a motion to appoint.
A move to appoint Keith Ayers and Zach Upton to.
Second.
Would you repeat, would you repeat that, sir? I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Ayers. I have a motion and a second to appoint, uh, Mr. Ayers and Mr. Upton to the CRA Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Tax Incentive Review Council. Do I have a motion to open nominations?
Move to open nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Do I have nominations, please?
Your Honor, I nominate Katie Herbert to that Tax Review Council.
Do I have further nominations?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Tax Incentive Review Council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Katie Herbert to the, uh, Tax Incentive Review Council for the full term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Katie Herbert to the Tax Incentive Review Council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next is Park Board. One seat, three-year term. Do I have a motion to open?
Motion to open nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nominations, please.
Move to nominate Matt Schmidt.
Further nominations?
Motion to close nominations?
Second. Just a second.
Matt Schmidt.
Park Board.
Oh, what, I'm on, I'm, excuse me. Yeah? Yeah? I don't have him on the list, I'm sorry.
He's on my list.
On your list as well?
And it's, I think it's DT.
DT?
Mm-hmm.
Keith, you nominated, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bales?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you ready? We have a motion and a second? Do we need a vote?
No, I'm not ready because I don't know who made the motion, second to close nomination.
I made the motion to close.
Second.
And all in favor was
All right, I'll make the motion to appoint.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second to appoint Matt Schmidt to the Park Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next is the Bike Way Advisory Committee. There are two seats, each full two, three-year terms. Do I have a motion to open?
Move to open nominations?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second on the table? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nominations, please.
Your Honor, I nominate, uh, Michael Jones and Mary Jackson, uh, to the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Other nominations?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Good.
I move to appoint Michael Jones and Mary Jackson to the Bike Way Advisory Committee for their full term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Michael Jones and Mary Jackson to the Bike Way Advisory Committee for full terms. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Moving on, Tree Advisory Board, two seats, both three-year terms.
Move to open Tree Advisory Board nominations?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. An open, I'll take nominations, please.
I nominate Junie, uh, Jeanne Cooney and Don Shipley.
Any further nominations?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion, that was a softy second.
That was a soft second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Did I keep up with that okay?
Yep, looks good.
All right, uh, do I have a motion to appoint?
I beg, a motion to appoint Jeanne Cooney and Don Shipley.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Jeanne Cooney and Don Shipley to the Tree Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, next it's the Youth Development Committee. We're gonna break this down. We have, uh, six seats. Uh, we're gonna break it down into the term, years and the terms, so we're gonna start with the two seats that are two-year terms. I'm sorry, three, three seats that are two-year terms.
And, and, can, may I real quick explain this?
Uh, just to explain this, uh, it's per, per our charter, the incumbents, if an incumbent is appointed, it's automatically a two-year term. Uh, anybody new can be appointed to a one or a two-year term. So what, uh, with staff has simply done is broke, broken it down into trying to get it even like a three and three on, in that basis, so. That's where we are.
Okay. So I need a, uh, motion to open nominations for the two-year terms on the Youth Development Committee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I'll take nominations for the two-year term seats.
Your Honor, I'd nominate Heather Vest, Chris Hadley, and Kendrick Ellerby to two-year term.
Any other nominations for the two-year term?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Heather Vest, Chris Hadley, and Kendrick Ellerby to two-year terms on the Youth Development Committee.
Okay, can I stop?
Sure.
Okay.
Mike?
Mike.
How would you like me to distinguish this? Because right now, I've got
As long as you remember the first three or two, I mean, we'll, we'll have to
Can you just make a second?
Go, go out to the
Let me, yeah, let me, can I go out to the side? Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Good.
Do you also need to make separate columns for the close and then the overall appointments, so we're doing them in two separate groups?
We're gonna do the whole process here, yeah. The, uh, okay, so we're at, for the two-year, uh, where are we at? We voted on
We're
We haven't called to vote yet.
No. Not called to vote yet.
So we need a
You did close.
A motion
I motioned to appoint
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where we stopped?
That's where we stopped.
To appoint
To appoint somebody, okay.
So I need a second to appoint?
Who did you, I mean, sorry?
Pete?
Those three.
Those three that up there, that are up there, I made a motion to appoint to the two-year term.
Vest, Hadley, and Ellerby.
Second.
Okay, excuse me.
I made a motion, I seconded.
I thought Mr. Curran
He did.
Nominated him.
He did. He made the nomination.
That doesn't mean the
I'm up to speed now. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Scroll down, Debbie, to, to the appoint, there you go, motion to appoint, that's been
Mr. Bales and Mr. Adams.
Correct.
Now, just use the other side to type in when we go through the other three members to close and
Okay.
Close, just, just type their name in.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion and a second to appoint, uh, Heather Vest, Chris Hadley, and Kendrick Ellerby to the two-year term seats on the Youth Development Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we're gonna repeat ourselves for the one-year term, so I need a motion to open nominations.
Move to open nominations? Oh, never mind, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bales, I overlapped you.
Move to open nominations for the one-year term to the Youth Development Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I will take, accept nominations for the one-year, three-one-year terms, uh, for the Youth Development Committee.
I will motion, uh, to nominate Sierra Peacock, Terry Dalton, and Sarah Hamilton to the one-year term.
Let's second that.
Oh, that's not, we're not closed yet, uh, we're not, he's, those are the nominations. Any further nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Okay. Do I have a second to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the one-year terms on the Youth Development Committee. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Now, are you ready for us to appoint? All right, do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Sierra Peacock, Terry Dalton, and Sarah Hamilton to the one-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint, uh, Sarah Peacock, Sierra Peacock, Terry Dalton, and Sarah Hamilton to the one-year terms on the Youth Development Committee.
Oh, my gosh.
It's a mouthful. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Environmental Advisory Board and we're gonna break that down as well. Actually, it'll be three different sections. We have two three-year terms, one two-year unexpired term, and one one-year unexpired term.
Again?
Move to open nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I'm including in that motion for the three-year term?
Yes.
Motion, okay. All in favor again? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I will accept nominations for the three-year terms.
I make, uh, nomination for John Kerner and Edward Bogden to a three-year term.
Move to close nominations?
Second.
Is anybody about to make a nomination real quick? No? Okay, I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the two-three-year terms on the Environmental Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to appoint?
Move to appoint John Kerner and Edward Bogden to the three-year term on the Environmental Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint John Kerner and Edward Bogden to the, uh, three-year terms on the Environmental Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, I need to open nominee, motion to open nominations for the two-year term.
Move to open nominations for the two-year term?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the two-year term on the Environmental Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Nominations, please.
Move to nominate Bryant Martin?
Second.
Any further nominations?
I nominate Wes, oh, no, only
No, that's later. Any other nominations for the two-year term?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
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 There's one nominee, one seat. Do I have a motion to appoint Brian Martin to the two-year unexpired term?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Brian Martin to the two-year term. I know, I'll give her a break in a second.
Who clo, who closes when you seconded?
It was the same. So I closed and then Councilmember Adams seconded, and then Councilmember Bales motioned to appoint, and then Councilmember Adams seconded. So it's the same for the, for both. Trying to make it easy.
Thank you.
All right, so there's a vote on the, the floor's open for the vote. I'm, all in favor of the, the motion to appoint, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, we have a one-year term. There's one seat open on the Environmental Advisory Board. All, we need a motion to open nominations.
Move to open nominations for the one-year appointment?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the one-year unexpired term. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I'll accept nominations, please.
Your Honor, I'd move Wes Eversole for a one-year unexpired term.
Any other nominations?
Move to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I'll ask for a motion to appoint, since I'm not getting a look from the, to all slow down. Do I have a motion, do I have a motion to appoint?
I'll, motion to appoint Wes Eversole to the Environmental Advisory Board for a one-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Eversole to a one-year term on the Environmental Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Exes Personnel Board, uh, do I have a motion to open?
Move to open nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Personnel Board. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I'll accept nominations, please.
I nominate Chris Williams.
Any further nominations?
I nominate Craig Keigar.
Any further nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Personnel
Can you hear with me for a second? Um, for some reason, like, you know, it, this product has disappeared.
Type, uh, type it into the left or right if you have to, because it's not gonna take it, because it's not gonna recognize it.
Huh?
Does this ever beat?
It's not.
Just curious.
That's why I said it's not going, because it's not on the list, remember? So go to the right and just type it in on the right. Yep, there you go.
Okay. Motion to close?
Move to close nominations?
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to appoint? Whoops, no, we don't, can't appoint. We have two nominees. We have Craig Keigar and Mr. Chris Williams. And the order that they were nominated is the order we will go in. Anybody have comment before we start?
I don't know, I, I nominated Chris because he's been active in the city for a long time. He's a retired police officer here and, uh, he's still active with the schools and, and really active with, uh, what's going on.
Okay.
I nominated, uh, Mr. Keigar just be, because he's an incumbent. Also, he is an active member of the Optimist Club and, um, has enjoyed serving on this committee for many years.
All right, uh, all in favor, you ready for the vote? All in favor of Mr. Williams, please raise your hand. One, two, three. All in favor of Mr. Keigar?
Per our rules, do we have to go through three votes or can we table this until our Councilmember Schwartz returns?
You can certainly make a request to table. There's no, there's no requirement you have to three times, no.
I would, I would make a request that we table this instead of doing another few rounds of
Yeah, we did not table the other one. We just said it was another
Okay.
Okay.
So instead of going through the three votes, can we just, do you think we could just
Unless, unless anybody wants to have another vote. Anybody wanting to have another vote?
Another vote, Your Honor.
Take another vote?
Okay.
That generally suggests something. So I'll ask again. Uh, Mr. Chris Williams, all in favor? One, two? Uh, Mr. Keigar? One, two, three, four. All right. All right. All right, do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Keigar?
Move to, go ahead.
You made the appointment, please.
Motion to appoint Mr. Keigar to the Personnel Board for a full term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint, appoint Mr. Keigar to the Personnel Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. The last one on the list is the Impact Fee Board, and it is something that staff is not recommending that we fill. It's not something that is met in ten, fifteen years, probably, but, and it may be longer than that. But, and impact fees are not the, is common as far as the requests anymore. So unless somebody else has anything to, any input on that, we will not make an appointment to the Impact Fee Board. Anyone? Officially tabled?
Just for the record, I think it wouldn't be bad. The table, the one pending, you have one at this point now, looked like it was gonna be two, it looks like. Just table it to really a date certain, which is when Councilmember.
No, this, the Impact Fee, we don't want it, we don't want a date certain.
No, no, I'm talking about tabling the one that you want.
Oh, the one previous.
Yeah. You just, I'd table it to a date certain, and it's when our seventh member returns.
So we don't know that date?
No, to a, to a date determined.
So not a date certain?
A date certain is when she returns, but I can't tell you when that date is, you're right.
Okay. Good point, though. Do I have a mo, let's see, let's go back to which one that was. The Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a motion to table the final appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Move to table final appointment of Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
But you want a caveat in there until the seventh? Can you add that to your motion?
I move to table the Board of Zoning Appeals appointment until we have seven full council members.
Second.
All right, and I have a motion and a second to table the appointment to the BCA until there's a full board, full seven members of the council present. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We don't need to do anything on the, we're not wanting to table the Impact Fee, if that's not.
No.
We're not gonna do anything with that. Okay. Next on the agenda is council appointments to local agencies. And we've all played our role in attending different, and representing the city at different organizations and their meetings. Has everybody had a chance to review the, this is the current list? Are there requests for changes, or are there people that wish to be changed? Where do you want to go?
No. Fine.
Okay. But the Fourth of July Committee is Councilmember Schwartz's primary, and Mr. Adams is secondary. Any discussion on that, or they want, you want to keep that?
I'd like to stay. I think she does, too.
Okay. Another board is the Green Cats Board. The primary is Councilman Adams, and the secondary is Councilman Doer. Do you wish to continue in those roles? Do you wish to switch those roles? Do you wish to get out altogether?
I go to about one meeting a quarter with them, so it's.
All right. Another organization is the Green County Family and Children First Council. Currently, the primary is Councilmember Curran, and secondary is Councilmember, or Vice, or no, Councilmember Schwartz. Any comment?
Every meeting's a holiday, Your Honor.
I'm glad you look at it that way. Green County Water Advisory Task Force, where the primary currently is Councilmember Bales, and the secondary is Councilmember Doer. Anything want to change?
I appreciate that, Committee.
Next is Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers, and I am the primary, and Vice Mayor Garcia is the secondary. We, that one should stay the same. There's no reason to change that one. Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. Currently, the primary is the Vice Mayor Garcia, and secondary is Councilmember Bales. Any?
I, I enjoy that Committee. I would like to stay on it, but I would also, I'd also like to make the offer, Councilmember Doers, I know, noticed that you are not primary on any of these. Is there one that you would, would you like to be primary on one? I'd be happy to switch you. I enjoy the board, but I do notice that you're, you're just secondary on a few of these, and I want you to have the opportunity to serve in another capacity if you choose.
I certainly appreciate it. The, the time for MVRPC doesn't work for me very well, but I certainly appreciate the offer.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to stay, and Councilmember Bales has picked me up a couple of times when I, I had conflicts, so I think it works for us if that's good for the board.
It's good with me.
All right. Little Miami River. Primary is Councilmember Bales, and secondary is Councilmember Curran. Any discussion?
Is that Hope Taft?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Stay?
I'm, it's fine.
Ohio Mayor's Alliance, again, that's pretty much, the mayor has to be the primary, Vice Mayor secondary. You're good with that?
Sure.
All right. Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee. Primary is Councilmember Adams, and secondary is Councilmember Garcia. Your plate still open enough to handle that?
I'm happy to swap out someone if anyone would like to take.
Would anybody like to be part of the Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee? It's a, I would think that would be a very rewarding position.
I enjoy it.
And like they were out working at the Senior Center on Sunday for the.
Yeah, super. Very nice.
Breakfast, I mean, it's a great little group of young people that change every year or so.
I'm also happy to stay on it as well.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to be secondary on that? In that case, we'll keep it as it is. The Golf Committee. And the Golf Committee currently is a, is an, is an appointment that is an liaison from council to the committee that was, I think, established just right after the golf, not long after the golf course was built, to get input from the members, and the residents that first bought out there. And it's, but anyway, the Golf Committee currently has the primary of Councilmember Bales, and secondary Councilmember Doer. Any comments or on that? Are we good? So. We will, I will entertain a motion if we want to, is just to maintain the same appointments as we just finished in the past year.
Move to maintain the present appointments, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the appointments to the boards and committees as previously existed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Got to help Debbie out as much as we can after that.
All right, next on the agenda is council time. Councilman Curran, would you like to lead us off? You sit over there.
Yeah, just have a few items, Your Honor. I, first of all, want to recognize Officer Spicer, who's retiring after thirty-five years with the Police Department, and has a long and noble career with the Police Department, and wish him the very best in his future endeavors. Also, our HR person will be leaving here. I think there's a social on Wednesday for her. What is that manager? Between one-thirty and three, I think, they're having to thank her for her service. Also, Project Emerge made a nice presentation at our Rotary, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful project. And it was presented to us that the challenges that they have in trying to bring men and women out of problems that they've had with drugs, et cetera. And it really is going to be a fantastic project, asking for help from the community and, and different, different parts of the, of our county and region. Also, I was visiting the Day of Caring at Senior Citizen, which the mayor just mentioned. They had a nice turnout. Of course, all the proceeds there go for the homeless, and it was really nice to see the turnout and the involvement of the staff, and most importantly, involvement of the youth board, which has been mentioned this evening, in serving the meals and helping out. It was really great to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Member Bales.
Well, thank you, and welcome back, Mayor Stone. We're glad to have you back at the microphone tonight. I also, like we talked about in our opening prayer and message, was glad to see that we all made it through the tumultuous weather this afternoon. I'd like to congratulate our high school swim team and high school hockey team for their fantastic, fantastic effort during their state championship run. Both gave really valiant efforts, and congratulate, congratulations to them. And then finally, I was, just wanted to make a comment. I was on the city's website this afternoon, searching for potential spring and summer opportunities for my kids. And I was really happy to see there, there are, I mean, dozens and dozens of opportunities for children in our community to engage in this spring and summer. And so if any parents are looking for activities for their kids, I just encourage you to go to our website and, and check it out. There's plenty to do, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your opening comments, Vice Mayor Garcia. As we approach the fourth anniversary of the Memorial de Tornados, thank you for keeping that in the minds, and just thank you for all the first responders as well. In particular, I'd like to thank the bus drivers, because they had, they were delayed significantly today, and doing extra work to get our young students home. So a big, big shout out to the bus drivers, there's a lot to be thankful for, and a great group that, that really do take care of our students. I had the opportunity to attend a Council on Foreign Affairs, Foreign Relations webinar. It piqued my interest, because it was with the State Department, and it had a Department of Subnational Diplomacy, and given our connections to Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, given the businesses in our community, I thought it was kind of interesting that the State Department has connections to local and state governments. And so that was led by Ambassador Nina Hashigian, and I thought, it gave me a number of points, should those in our community be looking for, to connect to businesses abroad, or just have delegations. There's a specific part of the State Department that can help with that, so something to file away. But thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was able to attend the ribbon cutting at the Wright Group on North Fairfield. It's a new real estate property management company. They actually moved here from Fairborn, so it's, it was nice to go to that. I'm looking forward, not really looking forward to Officer Spicer's retirement, but he's been with us a long time, thirty-three years is a long time spent with the department, and he's having a, I think, going-away thing on Friday afternoon, if I'm not mistaken. I was able to attend the Blue Star Families event at Hope Hotel on Saturday. That's, this lady, Dr. Maples, I think is her name, started this three years ago, the local chapter. It really does assist the service members' families when they're deployed. And she's done a lot of really good work with them, and it was a real honor to be involved with that. And I was also honored to represent Mayor Stone yesterday at the Tecumseh Boy Scout Eagle Scout presentation. Tecumseh Council had forty-eight Eagle Scouts represented yesterday, which is amazing. Ten of those were from Beaver Creek.
Wow.
So that's, that's a huge thing for these kids. That's, we've got some really good quality boys and girls out there that accomplished a lot. And then Mayor Stone and I attended the Dayton Realtor, Area Realtors Southern Ohio Global Alliance Meeting this morning, where they gave us some information on how they're, what they're doing to attract businesses from overseas to come to Dayton, and, or this general area. They've got a fifteen-county area that they work with, and some of the things, how we could work together with them here in Beaver Creek, so. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Also, welcome back. Usually, you are on vacation during this meeting. You misjudged those dates this year.
I was hoping you would just go ahead and do it.
You definitely mistimed that, but it's good to have you back. Thank you to all the volunteers. I know the board appointment process sometimes can be strenuous and lengthy, and technology doesn't always work the way we want it to, but we are incredibly grateful for all the volunteers in this community. And I said it last week as well, during, or two weeks ago during our proclamation, is that our, our community would not run as well as it does without our volunteers. So thank you to everyone who continues to volunteer and help out on those boards. This Sunday, Mayor Stone and I will be attending an event for the Girl Scouts for their Gold Award, Gold Award recipients. So it's a great event that they have annually, so we'll hope to have those Girl Scouts in, in a few weeks after that. But looking forward to having that on Sunday. And then this coming week, this Thursday, I'll have our monthly MVRPC meeting, so I'll follow up in a few weeks with you and let you know how we're doing from that. And that's about it for me.
All right, very good. And I guess it's my turn, and as you've already heard, I've been on vacation, so I have not been out and about for a couple of weeks. And it was a good vacation, and I appreciate everything running smooth here at home, so that while you're on vacation, you don't have to worry about that sort of thing. So I had a good time, and as Councilmember Adams mentioned, it started off bright and early this morning, and I even had to call the chamber to make sure that meeting was still on. But no, we got things rolling back in the, I'm back in the saddle again for, for a while. So thanks to everyone, and thanks to this community for being such a good community. All right, City Manager?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned, retirement of Officer James Spicer after thirty-three years. Congratulate him. Nineteen eighty-nine, wow. So congratulations and happy retire, retirement to Jim. It's, he's been an awesome officer for us. Street Resurfacing and Curb Replacement Program, the 2023 version is out there. We dedicated two and a half million dollars to this. It's only made possible, again, though, I will say, the cost has went up. Per ton of asphalt has increased again. So we're able to do eight-point-five-four centerline miles as we know it right now. We hope that, you know, a lot has to take into consideration when we're resurfacing of how thick it has to be on in certain places. So we usually have to wrap up our primary streets before we can decide how much funding we have to go on to secondary streets. But more information can be found either by calling the Engineering Division at four-two-seven-five-five-thirteen, or you can see the list of the streets and find out more about the program by visiting our website, bevercreekohio.gov/engineering. And on that page, you will see the resurfacing program button, to push that to find out all the information you could possibly want. Make a difference by volunteering, this was mentioned, but we, we have a lot of volunteers needed about this. We operate on volunteers. Our Senior Center Transportation Program is one of them that really operates on this. Wonderful bunch of volunteers. The program helps to address senior mobility issues in the area. Drivers escort seniors to medical appointments, grocery stores, and other local activities. Drivers do not need the special license, just a desire to help. So it's not a CDL needed, as many might think. Our Parks Department, we have a group looking for volunteer opportunity for this, always. If you have a group that wants to do mulch or do a special project, cities, parks are always looking for volunteers to help clean up playgrounds and spread mulch. And for additional information, you can contact the parks directly, four-two-seven-five-five-fourteen, or the website, bevercreekohio.gov/volunteer for more information. As mentioned, we are hiring. As the presentation that I presented earlier, we have a Human Services Director position open. Police officers, we're continuing to recruit. Human Resource Specialists, part-time, and many seasonal positions. On our website, you'll see bevercreekohio.gov/jobs for that. But I wanted to go on here to other seasonal Communication Student Internship, Code Enforcement Internship. This is awesome for those interns to find out how government works, to learn how to operate with residents, citizens. This is a good, if you have any kind. This is a good, if you have any kind of, where you're desiring to work with, in public service, this is an awesome opportunity to find out how government works, and we're, we're always willing to share that information and get you some experience. All the, all the way through more seasonal park student internship, seasonal sports management internship. Again, beavercreekohio.gov/jobs is where all those can be found. And I do have a video, if this will work here.
Hi, I'm Bennett. I am one of the camp directors for the City of Beaver Creek's Summer Day Camp.
Hi, I'm Amanda French, and I'm a summer camp counselor. This is my second year here at Beaver Creek, being a summer camp counselor, and I came back from last year because I loved it so much.
It is my first year at any summer camp, and it's been great.
I came to this camp for like two or three years as a camper, and now I'm here as a camp counselor, because I had a great time, and I want to help them have the great time I did.
We do games, crafts, we also have a hiking trail, just a wide variety of games and activities and crafts for them. So every Wednesday, we go on a field trip. We've gone to a lot of cool places. We've been to two water parks, Young's Berry, had some ice cream. It's always really fun, and they look forward to the field trips, too.
You can really, really tell that they're having the time of their lives. Makes me feel good that I know we get to give them a good summer.
To come out here and hang out with a bunch of kids, make memories for them. I, I got all of this today because, because they really enjoy their time here, and you get to connect with them.
It really has been a great experience to, you know, have something to do all summer, and also to be able to help develop and support these kids' lives.
And you're playing these games and doing these crafts. I just feel like I'm getting paid to have fun sometimes, and it's just loads of fun with them.
I've made some new friends, a lot of the staff I've become really close with, and will definitely continue to be in touch.
I would say this is the perfect job for someone who loves kids, who loves being outdoors and having fun, and who just wants to have an all-around great summer.
If they are energetic, if they love kids, and just want to be able to act like a kid again.
If you have any desire to work with kids or anything, do it. This is great. Also looks good on a resume.
It's the most fun summer I think I've ever had.
There's no job I'd rather have. I'm planning coming back.
There you go.
Very good.
Best commercial you can make right there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be playing that on our access can, channel, and probably on social media as well. Good job, Katie, on creating that. She saw foresight on that last year to make those videos to promote it for this year. Camp counselors, it is a lot of fun, like you see, but we couldn't hire enough. We had to turn away children, because we did not have enough counselors. It's always booked and always in demand, so if we can hire more camp counselors, we can have more children come to the camps. But right now, we're, we'll be restricted based on numbers. It's a numbers game for sure. And that is all I had tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to citizen comments, I want to back up a minute and just express my appreciation for you standing in for me while I was gone. But I just knew I forgot to say thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time on the agenda is citizen comment. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all, please come forward. Don't all sit there at once. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Everybody wanted to do that.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.